All right, we're going to call this. Sorry, now I'm on. We're going to call this meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please? Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Okay, you rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is a meeting of the West Gagga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Gagga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have an addition of Resolution 136A for employee severance plan.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
We do.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Okay, and moving on to programs reports and presentations.
All right, we have several tonight. There are several presentations tonight, and typically I don't get to say much for these presentations because I always turn the mic over to someone else. So for tonight, I'm going to steal a little bit of the thunder for just about 10 seconds, and I'm going to ask Mr. Amstutz if he will roll this clip, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Patty and Ms. Ojampa.
Gosh, what a game, I need a break. In third place with 450 points is the team from Perilion. In second place with 465 points is the team from Orange. And the winner of today's academic challenge.
Okay, that's it. That was fun. And our kids, our kids definitely were some of the more animated, entertaining kids there. So that was a very good time for us, okay? We had, go ahead, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you.
You turn it over to the real champion here.
Oh, well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So one of the fun aspects that we've been doing lately in the newsletter at the high school is Wolverines on the Move, right? So it's always fun to see the different aspects that our students are doing, and the accolades they're accomplishing. For this one, I want to bring up Cindy Ojampa, our advisor to the Academic Challenge Team. And I'm going to let Cindy introduce the students, but this is an incredible accomplishment because we haven't had an Academic Challenge Team, and now we do. And not only do we have one, but as you can see, a winning one, and very proud of the accomplishments they've made.
Yeah, so since last May, I think I started talking about it. And we did have a team, but it was pre-pandemic. And luckily, I knew a lot of them and how they were into trivia. And so Parker Pacifico, Hayden Makoo, I said your last name correctly, Rose Horgan, Morgan Savage, Tristan Morgan, because we have the two different Morgans, and Matilda Tumada, did I say it right? And also Eve Carty, who was our production person. She acted like Rob Powers. She was always able to say if they were too slow, "answer", and if their language wasn't appropriate, "language", and she was always getting them, you know, to rotate and try different teams. Not here tonight is Mason Towey, I think he's the only one not here tonight. But I'm so glad they won the episode, Episode 12, and they came from behind. And I think we only maybe missed four questions, and so 100 points short of, for next year, getting in the top and trying to, you know, maybe get some money for the school. But so proud of them, they work so hard, they're so much more intelligent than I could ever be at knowing their trivia. And so since Parker was the captain, and we're going to put this in a case at school, I'll give it to you again.
I'd like to say just a couple things real quickly. First of all, thank you to the parents for being here tonight and for raising such great kids. And for some of them, this is multi-generational. You know, we've had the big brothers and big sisters here before, so that's interesting. And I have a sort of a bond with Parker because he introduced me the night I came here 10 years ago. So obviously, he was just a little guy, and I was a young man, what, 30, 32? Anyway, and Shrek, you look good tonight, but you shed your, you shed your pounds so quickly. You could lose that weight and your coloration came back so swiftly also. You must have spent the whole day in the bathroom, we're not going to go into too many details there. But before you guys leave, I'd like it if you guys would come up here behind the board and get your picture taken with them. I'm going to get out of the picture so I don't ruin it. But you guys can get up there and get your picture taken with the board, please.
Are we going to stay sitting?
Will you stay sitting?
We look very, probably.
Should we scooch?
Should we stay sitting?
Yeah.
Scooch together.
We watched it, my mom was, "Look, they just..."
Skitch, 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 skitch.
Skitch?
Yep, perfect, perfect.
Is that different than scooch?
No, we got two more coming. Hey, good job, Shrek.
It really was, we really enjoyed it.
Next, we have Stephanie Meyer. Yes. Just stay off Family Feud, that kind of, I don't like that too much. Stephanie Meyer is going to talk to us a little bit about our science fair participants and give a little bit of a shout out to them.
Good evening. Before I introduce, we have two seniors I'm going to introduce tonight, only one of them is here. But I first wanted to thank the West Gagga Kiwanis Club. Every single year, they put together and organize our district STEM fair. This year, in February, we had about 80 student participants from grades five through 12. They compete in four events. Our individual STEM fair projects, our junk box wars for high school students, How Do I Fair for middle school students, and then two levels of math competitions. And if you haven't come before, I recommend you all come next February or late January, whenever it ends up being, because the enthusiasm and creativity our students show is really inspiring, and it wouldn't be possible without the Kiwanis Club. So I first want to thank them for everything they do to help our STEM fair run each year. All right, at the high school, our first and second place individual STEM fair project winners went on to compete at the Northeast Ohio Science and Engineering Fair, which is held at Cleveland State in March. Both of them did an outstanding job. I'm going to start by just talking about Robert Vash and his project. He's not here tonight, he's homesick, so thankfully, he's not here. But he did a project where he was presenting an alternative lock design. So he designed a basically unbreakable and unpickable lock. He went through multiple prototypes, 3D printed it in our STEM fair room and all of that. At Neosf, he placed third place in the engineering category, and he also received a special award from the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, the Cleveland section, which also got him invited to one of their, like, fancy evening dinners as well. So I know he was excited to attend that one. Our other recipient for our STEM fair is Matilda Tumada, so she's getting recognized twice tonight. Matilda, her project was entitled "A Development of Antimicrobial Soap, Formulated from Rambutan Extract and Its Impact on Bacterial Growth". So she took rambutan fruit, she extracted, got the extract from it. She then went around the high school and swabbed to collect lots of bacteria, put the rambutan extract into the soap, and then tested its efficacy on fighting that bacteria. With that, she earned second place in chemistry at Neosf along with multiple special awards, one from the American Chemical Society, the Cleveland section, one from Cleveland Clinic Learner Research Institute, and then the William R. Sweet Award for Chemistry. And she just told me the other day that she's competing in one more fair, the Best Medicine Fair, which is next week, I think April 26, something around there, yeah. So hopefully, she'll get some more awards under her belt at that one, too. But we're definitely really proud of all of our participants, and especially these two that went on to test themselves against lots of Northeast Ohio STEM fair projects.
Matilda, would you mind coming up here for one more?
Should we stand?
Yeah.
We're going to come up, we're going to go up there.
We have one more presentation tonight. This is a shameless pitch from our band people. So without further ado, I'll have Mr. Branch. Oh, okay, Mrs. Sapper is here as well to do this. Shouldn't place him first, I apologize.
Hi, everybody. So Jason and I just wanted to share some of our upcoming band concert events with you all and extend the invitation to attend any of these upcoming performances. I think they're all going to be really great concerts. So the first one coming up is our middle school band concert, that's going to be on Thursday, April 24. And those middle school students have been working really hard to put some great music together to share with the audiences. And then our high school band concert is one that we're very excited for. That's going to be on Thursday, May 1. And that's going to be our first kind of really big themed concert that we've done. So we're doing a big movie music theme, all of the music from all of the groups, concert bands, symphonic bands, steel band, jazz band, is all going to be movie music from, like, really recognizable movies that people will, I think, really enjoy to hear. Bamboozers is going to try to put together some, like, popcorn concessions type thing to kind of give it that movie atmosphere, and I think it's going to be a really fun event. So we wanted to extend that invitation to you all. And then our fifth grade band concert is the last one, that's going to be on Tuesday, May 6. And our fifth graders have been doing such a phenomenal job this year, they're such an awesome group. And so we're really excited for that concert as well. We just wanted to extend the invitation to you all for those events and share what our students have been working on.
Thank you, guys.
And then just to, like, shamelessly plug said concerts, and it's not a shameless plug, it's just a plug. And we, like, we know that we don't have to come up here and say, like, hey, here's an exciting concert, but the movie music theme, we're really excited to do one of these because it's usually just, like, concert band works that we get very excited about, but audiences love hearing music that they know. And then in terms of, like, inviting our administration and board members, we see you guys at the performances all the time, and we really, really appreciate that. And I just want to say for the past 15, it's 15 years, Bill, not 16. For the past 15 years, we've always had continued support. From my first board meeting when I got hired 15 years ago, Bill pulled me aside to give me some words of encouragement, and we always see you at, he might remember it differently. But we always see our administrators and our board members at our concerts, and the band program continues to grow and grow and grow, and we couldn't do that without your support. So we just wanted to invite you and tell you how much we appreciate you guys.
I think this is the 11th one I've seen, because I came the year before I started here, I came that year.
Well, this will be the best one because there's food.
Because I'm leaving? No, no, no.
Okay, and now that we told you about our concert, can we get a picture with you guys?
No.
That is shameless.
Okay, so the next section is public remarks, and we don't have anyone signed up.
Oh, if you guys would like to leave and your families, you are welcome to stay, but if you have other things you'd rather do than stay here for the rest of this meeting, take advantage of that now.
Bye, guys, good job.
Thank you so much again for coming. Bye-bye.
Bye, goodnight.
Hey, Mr. Branch? Are you going to be showing the movies while you're playing the songs?
We've talked about that a lot, I don't know.
That's what they do down at Blossom, you know?
Anything for you. It'd be a very long concert.
Be careful, Mr. Branch. Clock is ticking. You never know what he's going to ask for. You know better. That's better. Okay, moving on to routine items.
You skipped public remarks.
Oh, I said it, and then we got it, sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
But there are none, so. Now, can we move on to routine items?
My apologies.
Fantastic.
Resolution 108 to approve routine matters of the West Gagga Local Board of Education.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Financial Resolution 109 to approve warrants for May, March 2025.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 110 to accept donations.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 111 to transfer the following funds from the general fund to the capital fund in the amount of $1 million.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Does this have a particular target on it?
This is our second transfer. We have agreed to transfer $2 million, and then we have an additional transfer coming up for the water filtration system. So what we've done is made this the second transfer.
How much is the water treatment, is that the free million?
We're going to talk about that a little later in the program.
Okay.
But this is, but this is tied to capital projects that we've talked about from middle school.
So right now, in those eight or nine projects that we have, you know, we've identified as a board that you looked at, that we have, several of them have been, we've accepted bids, they're going to be out, so we want to make sure those are covered. But then when we go to look at the water filtration, we're going to need additional funds coming into this, into this 070 capital account.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 112 is a resolution to accept an administrative resignation. I would ask that the board make this motion and second it, and then I have some words I'd like to say before the board votes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
All right, it's really not a discussion as much as it is a commentary. Melissa came to us to head the team at Lindsay Elementary, and she brought a wealth of instructional experience with her when she came. She also has done quite a bit to engage the community, that's been one of her initiatives in the affairs of her school. If any of you have ever been there for her Veterans Day assemblies, they're phenomenal, and I get so much positive feedback from people who come in and see those. So she's not just a relationship builder, but she's also someone who's an outstanding, outstanding instructor. One of the things I'd like to compliment of our administrative staff is that there's no shortage of jobs for them after they've worked here at West G. And Melissa has built herself an impressive resume. She recently applied for and was awarded a job with the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve that is going to make very, very judicious and abundant use of her skills as an instructor. Melissa, if you wish to say anything more about this, I'd be happy to have you say it, but all I can tell you is that I've known Jennifer Falker, who's the superintendent at the ESC of the Western Reserve for probably 20 years, maybe longer than that, and she is so happy to have Melissa on board, and she has told me multiple times, she's exactly what we needed. So congratulations, Melissa, and you will be missed here, but I know that you are going to someplace that will make good use of you, and I believe in your new capacity, you're going to be here at least two days a week working with our kids. So we're not going to lose her instructional skills, she's still going to be back here, still going to be working with our kids. Only her contributions are going to be a little bit more widespread now than they were before because she won't just be in one building, so congratulations.
If I could add a little bit, because I've had multiple people that I've just seen at events, or and I had a couple call me, once they saw the minutes, expressing their sadness that you're leaving, so you will be missed.
I had several texts and emails on Saturday.
I'll bet.
But the three years here have been amazing, and I've learned so much, and I'm happy that I'm still coming back in a capacity, and I get to do what I'm really passionate about, which is math instruction. And that's what I'll be focusing on the most.
Congrats.
Congratulations, Melissa.
And we're glad she's coming back, so that's good. So with that out of the way, now's the time to vote.
Okay, call the roll, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
I would ask if the board treats this next resolution the same way. This is a resolution to approve certified staff appointments for the 2025-2026 school year, and it is, in fact, a certified staff appointment, singular.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Davis, will you do the honors? You startled, you didn't know this was going to happen tonight? You just showed up? You just happened to show up and wander in?
It is my pleasure to reintroduce you to Rossi Santos tonight, not as a football coach, but as an intervention specialist, a talented one at that. We are delighted to have him join our team after 10 years at Riverside High School and at a school like Cleveland before that. We have managed to win him over. He really, his student focus, his sincerity, his earnestness just shine through every time we have a conversation. Sarah Salisbury, our department chair of special education at the high school, and I have met with him, and we are just thrilled with what he will bring, not only to our students, but just our culture in general as we really try to grow a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance for every student and help every student live that successful life that we want to see them graduate to. So we are so excited to have Rossi on board, and we hope for your approval tonight.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, thank you for having me again, and good to see everybody again. Yeah, I mean, I've been here at West G now coaching for two months, and everything has been like, everything's been awesome, everything that, you know, you guys said you were going to give me, Mr. Pay, Mr. Amstutz, all the counselors and everything, everyone's been awesome, Brandon Storkey, Nancy, Amy, and Christine a lot. So I just want to say thank you for everything, very excited to be here, even more excited to talk to Mr. Davis and Mrs. Salisbury about potential openings, about like, you know, the kids that I've been dealing with for the past 11 years, which is what I think is exciting to me as well. Again, just very exciting, and I can't thank you guys enough for having me back, so.
He's already started it, his Saturday morning practices are, I mean, never has the attendance been so high, so.
I believe you have 80 kids, don't you, going out to lift now, or?
We'll see.
So somebody lied to me about that, huh?
What's that?
Somebody lied to me about that, I'm just kidding. Good, that's very good, it's a good sign, you're doing the right things.
Thank you, guys.
I've got a question for you, Coach.
Yeah?
My daughter's special ed in Indiana, and they have a program where they, I forget what they call it, but where they have a mixture of kids playing various athletic events, where some of them are kids with special needs, and others are maybe the normal football player, and they'll put them together on teams for various things, like, not only football, but bocce and a whole bunch of other things. Are you familiar with that kind of program? I mean, it seems like this would just really fit in your wheelhouse.
Yeah, I've never heard of that before, no, but like, right now on our West G football team, we have two teams with special needs and stuff. I mean, they participate just like all the other Gen X players do, when, you know, they're on the team and they're going to play in the games and stuff, but it's like, when they get in a game, we just have to notify the other coaches, hey,
Yeah, sure.
you know, don't hit them hard and things like that. So just a lot of communication with the other coaches, but I mean, I've never heard of anything like that, though, that does sound interesting.
It's, like I said, they have it in Indiana, and it's a whole separate conference, I'll call it.
Okay.
It isn't just, I mean, what you're doing is, I'll say, true inclusion, but this is not, it's creating a separate set of teams to play against each other.
Right, kind of sounds like a broad market thing, something like that, so.
Yeah, okay.
We have a lot of plans, lots of plans for our Ross. Rossi Santos is going to be.
I was just going to say, Ross, you're going to be so busy. But we love you, we're so excited. Listen, you're in all of it, it's a great place to work, it's a great place to be. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ross.
Yep, congratulations. Resolution 114 is to approve certified stipend for work outside of the 24-25 contractual year.
So moved?
Second.
Called, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 115 is to accept certified staff resignations.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 116 is to approve classified staff appointments for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 117 is to approve an additional transportation route assignment. This is to fill the mail run, which was vacated recently.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 118 is to approve the rehiring of the classified staff named in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 119 is to accept classified staff retirement.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Do we know how many years? I mean, we've still got a number of years.
I'd have to check, I don't know, I can find out and let you know. Okay.
I just, I mean, maybe we could put that back on.
Sure. Not a problem. Next resolution? Resolution 120 is to accept classified staff resignations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Call the roll, please. Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 121 is to approve unpaid days. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 122 is to approve 2025 summer programming stipends, as listed.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 123 is to approve supplemental contracts for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 124 is to approve service contracts for the 2024-2025 school year, as listed.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 125 is to accept the nonrenewal of all 2024-2025 long-term substitute contracts. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 126 is to accept the nonrenewal of all 2024-2025 supplemental and service contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 127 is to approve chaperones for the middle school sixth grade trip to Camp Fitch.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 128 is to approve the first reading of revised policy 2280. This is the preschool program policy. So move.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 129 is to approve the independent contractor agreement between Alana Rusku, Rusku, how is Ruska? How do you say it?
Ruska.
Ruska, I was close the first time. And West Jaga Local Schools for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 130 is to approve the Audiology Consortium Services Contract between Summit Educational Service Center and West Jaga Local.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Resolution 131 is to approve the Always Construction LLC proposal.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question, what is it? What is it for?
I have the same question. It's the construction drive to the location of the new well. The location of the well has been solidified. We have to have a construction drive to get the equipment back to do the work on the well. So it's the construction of that driveway.
So it's a drive, and that.
Wow.
Expensive driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a long, heavy-duty, big drive. I mean, it's a deep, it's a project, like two feet deep with gravel, and it's a lot of work.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Why have a question? Why wouldn't that be included in the whole well project cost?
Mark, can you answer that, or Scott, in terms of how it would be?
It just seems to me, one pro.
It started on the driveway, like, a year ago? And you started on the well back there, and you got, and this one was, it was going to work. And then you got to the well project, and it was more concentration.
And it would be a different company, it wouldn't be the company that drills the well. Okay, so.
Go ahead.
This is a permanent drive, it's not a slot driveway, it's a permanent drive.
But should we be approving the well before we approve the road? That's what I'm questioning.
In order to do the testing for the well, we're going to have to have this road. And this road is going to stay, is it connected to the, to the baseball field? Is it connected to the baseball field?
It's around back.
To the back of the baseball field as well. So we have that available for.
So even if we didn't do the well, we'd do the road?
Or we have to put the road in so we can go back and find out whether the well can really go there?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You need the road first, on this one.
I understand what you're saying, but I think I understand what they're saying, too.
Yeah, I do, too.
They both make sense, yeah.
The road will stay in place after the well is drilled.
Got it.
And the road also can be used for water, isn't it?
For access to the well.
Okay. You good? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 132 is to approve the addendum from 2024 through 2026, aligned school district service agreement between West Jaga Local Schools and the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question. Nothing really changed, except the price, maybe? It's just an addendum, so it looked like it was.
Yeah, whenever we have additional services, we have to file an addendum with the ESC.
Okay.
So this is the addendum for that service. It wasn't included in the original contract.
Okay.
Which you'll see in the next year's contract in the next resolution. We have a list of all the services that we would like to.
What is this new service? What is this?
The, this one we just did, that's the adaptive PE services.
Got it.
That's further.
Adapted, not adaptive.
Adapted. We had to look it up. Because I thought it was adaptive, and Karen thought it was adaptive. And I thought they made a mistake, but I looked it up, and it's adapted PE, not adaptive. So I've been saying it wrong all these years, so.
So, are you admitting that you made a mistake?
So what does that mean? I make plenty of mistakes.
Asking for a crowd.
I make plenty of mistakes.
Okay.
It's not especially certified to help more intensive students gain access to physical education, but in a modified sense, and they also help to teach teachers, adapt some activities.
So it's physical, adapted. Okay.
Says it in the last line of the resolution, but I was going to change, didn't.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Yes, Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Resolution 133 is to approve the 2025-2026 Educational Services Center of the Western Reserve Service Request Form.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 134 is to approve the Proactive Behavior Services District Tuition Agreement. This is between West Jaga Local Schools and Proactive Behavior Services.
So moved. A second? Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Resolution 135 is to approve the quote from C D W. Government LLC for the purchase of Chromebooks.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
And we were able just to get these Chromebooks in before the price increases. Scott, it'll, it'll be right in there.
Excellent.
So good.
Excellent. Resolution 130 is a resolution to approve Cafe 306's ability to charge cost plus thirty-five percent for T-shirt sales in the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please. Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
And then the additional resolution, Resolution 136A is to approve the implementation of an EPC Severance Incentive Program.
So moved. Second. Any discussion?
What does EPC stand for?
EPD, what is it? What EPC, what is it, Karen? It's this, it's the, it's supposed to incentive employment. She's got to look it up, look at that.
No, it's, it's by the, that's her name, EPC. That's all I've ever called them. It's a consulting group that we use.
Oh, it's a consultants group.
To determine our buyout, in the, in the savings we'd have in the buyout.
Okay. See, wasn't so bad that I didn't know. All right, second mistake. Three more, and you're out. What you gonna do?
Baseball game, three more on top of the two? Fancy baseball game.
Feeling pretty free right now.
Did we, did we have a motion yet?
We've had a motion, and we need to take the vote, if that's all right.
Call the roll, please. Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Okay, discussion of new business and suggestions to include on future agenda. So we, at the last meeting, wanted to get a voucher update. And I know that this is something that Kathy, in particular, has been really working with, so do we have?
I can, I can give you a little bit of information on this. It's hard for us to say how many kids take vouchers, we don't know. I mean, we don't have that count, just as we don't have the count of the kids who go to private school here. Because we don't get that information. They go, they enroll at the private school, they're not here, so some of the kids have never been here. What we did, Sarah gave me some, some figures today that were, that were kind of revealing to me. First of all, I'll, I'll give you the, the good news one, I guess, is that we have a number of kids who are served out of district every year. And those are kids who go to, they go to the ISTEM school, they go to Auburn Career Center, they are kids who are in community schools, open enrolled kids to other districts, and then also kids who have the autism and John Peterson Scholarship. And overall, this year, we have a smaller number of kids who are served, who are West G. kids, served outside of district. We have one hundred eighty-two kids served in those various programs this year. Last year, we had two hundred twenty-one. So that means we have less kids in those out of district placements. When I looked though at the actual transfer of kids, and I say, I looked at this, I looked at it and then I said, Sarah, can you please give it to me? And she did. Um, how many kids did we have this year who transferred from West G to private schools? And how many kids did we have who transferred from private schools into West G? Um, now this is linked to the voucher program, I believe. Because we don't have a huge difference in the number of kids that we would normally have in private schools from what we can tell. But we did have overall thirty kids who went to private schools this year that we know withdrew from West G schools to go to private schools. And we had seven kids moving from private schools back into West Gaga. Was some of this due to the voucher program? I'm not sure, because a lot of the kids who are getting vouchers now went to private schools before the voucher program existed. So they went there, the parents paid tuition. Now, in a lot of private schools, they're advising their regular students who they've had for years, hey, you may qualify for the voucher from the state. So apply for it. And of course, the parents do, because the, the standards for that, a family of four can have an income of a hundred forty thousand dollars and still qualify for the voucher. So are you going to take the eight thousand dollars or leave it on the table? Chances are you're going to take it. And so we feel that in certain cases, some of the kids who've gone to private schools now do so because in fact, they have a big boost in their tuition payments to those private schools. I did look at the schools though, because Sarah had listed them out. Of the, of the thirty schools the students went to, um, only seven of those thirty were non-sectarian schools. Other ones were sectarian schools. So if you ask someone, and, and they were primarily either Roman Catholic schools or evangelical Protestant schools. And so those schools can offer an element to the education that we can't and that we, by being a public entity, we're not able to. And that is that they can integrate the concept of reason and of academics with the components of their faith. And we're not able to do that, because as a public school system, we can either, um, suppress religious expression nor unless it interferes with the, the education. Nor we can't promote, nor can we proselyze, proselytize, nor can we oppress, um, students' religious beliefs. So if you're, if you're sending your child from a public school to a Roman Catholic school, because you want learning to be run through the lens of the church, or if you're sending them to an evangelical school where they want a strong biblical foundation to the learning, we can't compete with that. So I wasn't, when I, when I looked at that and I thought, wow, thirty, you know, thirty kids went out and seven came in, came back to us from private schools. When I looked at the schools they were going to, it made a little bit more sense to me. Um, I'm sure there are some kids who do go for academics. I'm sure there are some kids who go for, um, you know, for athletics. But I think that there are also quite a number of kids who go because they want the religious component, that, that thread in their learning. So that, I guess, gives you an idea of where we stand. Did we spend, did we have a lot of kids take advantage of the vouchers this year? I would guess that we would, because we normally have a sizable number of kids, as does any public school district, who avail themselves of a private education. And it's not nearly, that's not indicative of how many kids we have leaving. It's not like they're leaving by the hundreds. If we had two hundred kids in private school before, we may have two hundred twenty now. But I think the voucher has influenced some of the decisions. And I think also that many of the kids who are receiving vouchers are kids that we didn't have anyway, because they were kids who were already in the private school. So it's a misnomer, it's, it's a misperception. It's not true to think that kids are migrating from, you know, West G to go to all these private schools. That's not the case.
And the voucher program has, um, developed along the way too. In the very beginning, this was developed for people in failing school districts, so that they did not have to send their children to a failing school district. And that was the only reason that you were going to get a voucher. Since that beginning, that inception of the voucher program, it has continually been broadened. And so now, you know, if I wanted to send my kids somewhere, it didn't matter that we were a top ten district. I can still take the voucher and send my kids to a school that has no way to, to be ranked. But depending on what my beliefs were, if I wanted that religious component, then I could now use the money which before I would not have, because this has never been a failing district.
Because we're not, yeah, you're right. I mean, it was, it was designed initially for students who are disadvantaged or who were in a failing school district. And our students are in neither of those categories. To Kathy's point, there's a, there's a movement, there's a lawsuit called Vouchers Hurt Ohio, and a lot of districts have joined that. We never have, but that might be a discussion for the board in terms of, do we want to identify ourselves with this and, um, and join this lawsuit? Because as you say, now vouchers are hitting us in a way that they didn't hit us in the past.
I, I think, I mean, we need to look at it from a standpoint of what, um, Dr. Markort just shared with us as far as how it's impacting West Gaga. But I, I think more, my concern is what you were talking about, Christina, is how it's grown. And that it, it, it's taking money away from public schools in general. And, I mean, there are a lot of districts in the state that don't even have private schools. They don't have, uh, schools that they can use vouchers for. And their, their tax money is going to the state and then it's getting sent to people who don't even live in, in those counties. Um, and there's more legislation to follow. I think we just need to be more aware of and more on top of and more concerned with what's happening with our tax dollars and, and where the money is going. Uh, the, ever since I was president, I was School Board's Association. And before that, the state legislature has not followed the state law, which is saying how schools should be funded. And, and our friend John Patterson, who put forward, cut Patterson bill, um, which never got passed. Uh, we're just, schools are not being funded as they should be in Ohio. And money, more money is being taken, to being taken away from public schools and from some of the stuff that's happening now. Uh, of looking like they're trying to cap, um, what money we can have for carryover. I don't know whether, how many people have been reading about that. But, you know, schools, we, we pass school levies and we haven't had new money since, what, oh five, twenty oh five? So we've been very lucky with that. But, uh, you, we, we generally would pass a levy to last three, four, five years. And we do that so that we have a carryover in order to plan for, uh, our salaries going up and, and, uh, changes that are being made. And with, with some of the laws that are being proposed now, uh, we would have to have a levy on the ballot every year or every other year. Because the legislature wants to say you can't have more than a certain amount of carryover. So, you know, um, trying to tie our hands. And I think we just, as a school board, need to be more involved with what's going on, uh, financially.
Well, I think you get into the situation then where you're facing levy fatigue.
Yeah.
People don't want to be going to the ballot and voting on operating costs every two years. The other thing that's a little bit different, and, um, and that is the standards to which the private schools are held and the public schools are held. They're very, very different. Um, and, and I say that as a person that I would consider to be a friend of private schools. I used to teach at a private school and it was a great experience. And I think very, very highly of that school. It's one of the schools that some of our kids have, um, have chosen to go to this year. And yet I look, you know, as a parent and as a grandparent, and as a grandparent, I have grandchildren who've gone to public school and who've gone to private school. And in either case, it was what was deemed best for the child by that child's parents. And I think every parent should exercise that same judgment when it comes to the education of, of their children. However, I also think that it's, it's, it's frustrating to me to think that tax dollars, my tax dollars, may be going to support, uh, an enterprise that I wouldn't have chosen to support. When my children send their kids to a private school, they pay the tuition to go there and it's their choice and I respect it. Um, but I think that right now it's, it's, it's hard for s- public schools, because we're on an unlevel playing field. We're held to a host of standards that the private schools. I don't believe there is a cap on the carryover for private schools. Correct me if I'm wrong, is there? No. So we're being told that we're going to be held to a thirty percent carryover of our budget. And yet private schools, which receive donations, et cetera, as well, and grants and endowments, don't have any such cap. I'm not saying they should, but I don't think we should either. I guess that's my point.
I agree. I think that every parent has the choice to send their children, then that's, that's entirely up to that family. Um, but, but the, that public money is now being used to build private schools coffers as well. And that's, that becomes problematic for us especially.
Right.
So.
I have one more thing.
Yes, sir.
This is new business, kind of. I'm going to hand this out to you, because I, I don't want to be an alarmist here. Um, but I'm going to mention measles to you. The reason I say that is because if you watch the news, especially the television news, which people here have dubbed the old person news, because I watch it. If you watch any of the major networks, you'll know that there is a measles outbreak that's affecting several states right now. It's, one of them is Ohio. The, the district that's clo- the area that's closest to us, the region that's closest to us that's been experiencing this outbreak, has been in, um, Ashtria Bula County. Now, Ashtria Bula County, the last I knew, had twelve active cases of measles. You're probably thinking, well, that's not really an outbreak, is it? By the definition of the Health Department guys, two is an outbreak. If we have two or three, and I've heard both, but what they're saying conservatively is two cases, two active cases constitutes an outbreak that we have to report as an outbreak. We haven't had no cases in our school district. So we can say in West G, there has been no outbreak whatsoever. However, if there is, we are following the recommendations of the Health Department, which is on the other side of your sheet. It is recommended that we have students who have not been inoculated excluded from school for twenty-one days. And that's twenty-one days after the last case that we have is no longer contagious. We have seventy-two kids who have not been inoculated. So I hope we don't have an outbreak. I hope we don't get those two kids who get measles. So far, we don't have them. But, um, I do need to send something out probably fairly soon to the parents, I thought this week after I talked to you. So that you would, so they would know what measles are, how to deal with measles. Um, and then also to advise them of what the Health Department's recommendations are, because I don't want people to be surprised. Um, and it, it seemed a little bit counterintuitive to me, because if you look at those Health Department recommendations, the first one says that a student who contracts measles can return to school for, on the fifth day after the rash appears. And that has to do with, but then it says they have to stay out twenty-one days if they haven't had it. So I said, so if I just let my kid get exposed, there's an incubation period of, it says in, in this literature how long it is. Um, but after they get the measles and they have, they're, they're presumed to be then immunized and, and not able to get it again, they can return. But the one that's going to irritate people, I'm sure, is a hundred twenty day, or twenty-one days, my kid's out of school, my kid's not sick. You're telling me I have to keep my kid out of school because they're not inoculated, because you have two cases of measles? But that's the Health Department recommendation. That's what they're telling us we should do. So I wanted you to have that heads up. Um, and I'll be sharing some of this with the community. I'm sure there'll be people who may have things to say to me about it, but we'll see.
Is this a board decision, Dr. Markort, or are you?
Not really. I mean, it's, it's one where, you know, the, the question that was posed by me is, the way I anticipate this occurring would be that parents would use the same rationale as they use to oppose the vaccine. It's either a matter of conscience or a matter of religion. There are several conditions whereby people can choose not to get their kids inoculated. One is because the child has already had the disease and already has a natural immunity. Two is that the child is medically fragile in some way and a physician says that, that vaccine would be bad for the kid. We should not give that kid a vaccine. And the third would be matters of conscience or religious beliefs. That a parent just says, I, it's against my religious convictions, it's against my conscience, I don't want my child to have a vaccine. And they have a right to not have their child inoculated. We have a form that we send out to them, or they give us a doctor's, a physician's excuse. Usually if it's one of the, one of the first two, it would be a physician's excuse. The last one would be just, you know, the parents can fill out the form and say, I, as a parent, don't wish to have my child, um, inoculated. I did say though, that I think that last one will come when a parent says, I want to send my kid to school. Because, you know, I, I think my kid will be fine, trust in the Lord on this one, whatever, I'm going to send my kid to school, hasn't been inoculated. You can't tell me I can't. And we can't tell them they can't. So I would not want to be the person who says you can, um, knowing that the child would face a risk of getting the disease. And I don't know what, what secondary results could occur. So I did ask the question of legal counsel. I said, are we able to say unequivocally, your child has to stay out for those twenty-one days? And I was told yes. So I hope it doesn't come to that, hasn't come to it. We don't have any outbreaks. Um, we don't have any measles cases here. I would just ask people to keep your kids out of crowds where there's sick kids and, and keep your kids healthy. So we don't have that, so we don't have to cross that bridge. But I did want the board to have an awareness of it before I send anything out to families. Um, as I say, it's a, it's a small percentage of our kids who are not inoculated. Um, but it's seventy-two kids. And seventy-two kids, if they were told had to stay out of school, because we have two or three kids who have it. I mean, especially if you're, you know, if you have a child at high school and you have a kid that contracts measles at, at Westwood. It's like, well, my kid's not at Westwood, so why, you know, why does my kid have to stay out of school? And I may be able to check on that. Actually, that's one of the things I hadn't really thought.
Yeah, I was going to say that might be something.
Why couldn't we keep the kids in the other buildings?
Yeah, I think it would be location.
I think that would make a lot of sense. I'll ask the Health Department how they feel about that.
What does the third bullet mean? What is that? I G if immunocompromised?
Which one?
The third bullet.
Uh, immu- uh, something globulin.
Immunoglobulin.
Third bullet of which one, the?
This, the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the.
The letter from the.
Oh, the Health Department? Let me see what it is, because I don't have that one here.
What is it?
And that one, I'll show you.
Immunoglobulin.
Oh, I G if immunocompromised. Um, I asked the same question of the Health Department, they couldn't tell me. But it's an immunocompromised kid, so I asked the same thing, I said, what does I G mean? We didn't know the answer. That was the Health Department guy.
Is it transmitted by?
This came from. It's airborne, it's airborne. It, it's not.
So kids are riding in the same buses?
Yeah, if they were.
Yeah.
Maybe we could check on that.
I mean, they use the same buses for the high school and for the, for the middle school.
We do use, yeah.
I, I think we should also check on children who've had measles and have a natural immunity.
Yeah. And a lot of our adults might have, I mean, I, I had measles as a kid.
I had measles, yeah.
I had measles and I had chickenpox, both.
Yeah, a lot of us have, I think.
I had mumps at the age of twenty-nine, which was definitely an unpleasant experience.
Yeah, it's not fun. Okay.
Don't go any further with that one.
Or you don't.
So have you, I know you guys are always ahead of the curve on lots of stuff. So have you figured out the, uh?
Pam found the one thing I couldn't find out, that was what does I G stand for? I did ask that. Um, but he was, I can get an answer from him, I'll ask him again. But we've met with the, I met with the Health Department Commissioner a few times on this.
But my question was, are we prepared to provide schooling to those kids that are out for twenty-one days?
In terms of distance learning, no.
Yeah.
Well, how are we going to do it?
I don't know. But I'm just thinking, this is, this is sort of similar to when we had the pandemic and we more or less turned on a dime and figured out how to provide some instruction for the kids when we had to shut things down.
We weren't given an option when we turned on the dime.
I understand.
I agree with Bill though, it might be something we need to think about. I mean, I hope we don't need to even do this.
Like, it was, I mean, it was to say we did it, but it wasn't an awesome experience for any of us.
It wasn't great for anyone, no. But.
Okay, hopefully we don't ever have to talk about it again.
I hope we don't have to do this.
I do too.
But there is also a solution and we didn't have a solution during COVID. We were told schools were closed. And here, uh, schools would not be closed for almost everyone. And there's always an allowance made in terms of work being sent home and, and made up and turned in late. I mean, not that you'd wait two months, but I mean, it could be turned in.
And, and maybe that's the answer to the question. But my real question is, is if a kid is out for twenty-one days, are we going to make sure that he doesn't fall behind?
I think you'd have to deliver, you'd have to deliver it over the Chromebook, because no one's going to go to the house. I mean, people aren't going to go into a house that has an illness and risk getting it themselves or giving it to their kids. Um, and I think that would have to be what would be done, but I, I mean, I'm, I'm not, we're not prepared to allocate staff to say, you're the remote teacher and you're going to teach all these kids online, I'm going to take them away from your classroom. And you're not going to teach all your regular kids, because you're going to be teaching the kids whose parents have chosen not to get them inoculated. I'm, and I'm not arguing with the parents for making that decision. But I also don't think I can take a kid away from, or a teacher away from the regular classroom and devote them to, to teaching those students. And, and the, the ways in which they'd be taught, those seventy-two kids aren't all in one class or one grade level. They're scattered all throughout the school. So I think we'd probably have to deliver it, Bill, in answer to your question. I think it would have to be on a one-to-one basis. The teacher would help the kid get through the situation. But it would have to be work that be, could be turned in remotely, because we can't send anyone out to the house or anything like that. And we have that capacity now. I mean, I'll, every kid has a Chromebook.
Okay. That, that's the answer to the question. We have the capacity now and we would do it over Chromebooks.
Yeah, I would have to. And there's some things we, you know, they might have to turn in later.
Yeah. My question was, how do we make sure that those kids don't fall twenty-one days behind?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I get it.
Is that your report or is that?
That was it. Then it was the, the last part wasn't, the last part was the question.
Right.
But the measles, I just wanted you to know it's coming. We have to get something out into the hands of parents so that they understand. I do not have any more reports, no.
Okay. Anyone on the board? Anything for the good of the order? Okay, um, we will be, um, adjourning into executive session for personal matters, appointment and or employment, and conference with legal counsel concerning current or possible litigation. We'll be inviting Ryan Patti, Julie Moschberger, Megan Bellin, Dr. Markort, Dr. Beninkasa, Karen, and the attorney, I'm Peter Zowinski. And there will be no action taken after executive session.
Yeah, way to go Christina.
That's the best I've ever done on that one. Okay. Ready gang?
So move, second.
Call the roll, please.
Wait just a minute. I was stunned by the list of people.
By the efficiency of my.
Your delivery.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman Walsh? Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to meet in. We're going to meet in...
Can we do it earlier?
Is there a different day?
Yeah, anytime you want.
Can we do it earlier than seven?
I can do it anytime you want.
What day of the week is that?
So Wednesday.
Wednesday.
You want to leave it at seven then?
No.
No. Oh, I would love to do it earlier.
What time do you want to do it?
I'm fine.
Five?
I'll bring popcorn.
You're retired.
Only sort of.
Let's go.
Yeah, I think I could do it at five.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock on April 30th.
Thank you.
All right, April 30th, five o'clock. And then I'll send out a special meeting notification with what we've got. It'll be closer to April 30th because we'll know a couple of other things by that time.
Okay, very good.
All right, are we good then?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, call the roll please. Mrs. Coleman Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Leavenworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherwood?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mrs. Claypool?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay.